Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do a review video for you. So the idea of this video is just for me to go through the kind of key contents in this unit. So this is something that will give you extra credit if you watch. Sorry, I'm adjusting my camera a little bit. So it's not required, but I would recommend it just because I think what I go through is what I consider to be heavily tested and the most important material. So please, you know, watch it, copy along the diagrams with me, and it will hopefully help you on the test. So I kind of have a list of six things I want to go through, and I want to try to get through it in about an hour. So it's putting me at about 15 minutes or so per little topic. So I want to go through kind of the organelles that are heavily tested on. I want to go through surface area to volume ratio in terms of reviewing the calculations and talking to you a little bit about the best way to then interpret those results. I want to look at the cell membrane. We may spend a little bit longer on that because I want to kind of combine cell membrane with transport. So looking at the ways in which things are transported through the cell membrane. Want to talk a bit about tonicity, osmolarity and water potential again in terms of the water movement. And then two more kind of calculation style things. I want to talk about the water potential formulas and then the molarity calculations. So those are kind of our goal of things that we want to go through. So I want to start, and I'm going to kind of do it as six kind of boards or so. So starting with organelles. So what I actually want to do, just to do something a little bit different, is I want to actually draw a cell and look at the organelles within the cell and kind of how they work together. So I'm going to draw a giant plant cell. And again, you can just watch this. You don't have to draw along because I'm not having you turn this into an official grade. But for some of you who learn by kind of copying, you can be kind of drawing along with me as just kind of a way of practicing this. So there's kind of some organelles that are more important than others in terms of the scope of the AP Biology content. So for instance, here's our cell wall. And our cell wall generally, we think of this as being in charge of like protection, but it also does play a role in the kind of water potential because it contributes to this idea of Turgor pressure. So because there's a cell wall, so what happens is the cell can't easily just expand out when it starts to take in water. So whereas an animal cell can kind of swell and get bigger, plant cells have that rigid cell wall. So what that does is it contributes that pressure potential inside the cell whereby water is building up in the vacuole, not able to get out, and it's exerting a positive pressure. So that cell wall does more than just kind of protect. We do need to also know that it plays a role in kind of that Turgor pressure and that internal water pressure building up inside of the cell itself. Then we have the cell membrane. So the other thing to kind of make note of as I go, I'm just going to kind of look at what cells have it. So one important thing is to know that all cells, both prokaryotes and eukaryotes, do have a cell membrane. When you're looking at cell wall, you're looking at plants and prokaryotes. So prokaryotes often do, or all prokaryotes have some sort of cell wall. Fungi also have cell walls, so it's just making sure we don't fall into that kind of middle school level of thinking of plants have a cell wall and that's it. Okay, so next thing I'm going to draw is the really large vacuole. And so again, at a simple level, we think of it as, okay, that's really important for storage. So it's there to store water and nutrients and things like that. But more significantly, particularly for this unit, we need to look at its role in kind of Turgor pressure. So this creates the pressure on the cell, so it fills up with water. And as a plant cell takes in more and more water, if it's in a hypertonic environment, that water goes into the vacuole, and that vacuole gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and that actually puts a pressure. So this is where the water potential, when we come to our formulas, the pressure potential, it comes from that vacuole. So from water filling in the vacuole and putting pressure external on that cell wall, that's all coming from that vacuole. That vacuole can get smaller or bigger depending on how much water movement there is. So that kind of plays more of a role now that we understand a little bit more about water potential having that pressure element as well, but that's where the vacuole comes into it. Remember, in animal cells, so both plants and animals have it, but it's only large in plants. In animals, they have lots of small vacuoles, so they still store materials, but they don't have that one central storage, so therefore they don't have that kind of Turgor pressure involved. Theirs is just for storage. Okay, next up, we have the nucleus, with a nucleolus here. The nucleus has in it DNA. So a few kind of comments. So all living organisms have DNA. That is a given. So anything that is alive has DNA. Difference is that in prokaryotes, it's circular and found in the cytoplasm. In eukaryotes, it's linear and actually found contained in the nucleus. So floating around in the cytoplasm. So this I've drawn here, the one I've actually drawn is a plant cell. And so we're just kind of clarifying some things along the way of where things might take, where it might be in other kinds of cells as well. Okay, so then close to the nucleus, so what I want to do now is kind of draw our endomembran system. So our endomembran system does actually start kind of with the nucleus and the nuclear membrane, and then near that, we're going to have our endoplasmic reticulum. And I've drawn these ribosomes on it. So what I'm looking at here is my rough ER. So we know it's my rough ER because I drew ribosomes on it, so I'll label these as ribosomes. There is also smooth ER, so I can draw some smooth ER up there. Rough ER is very much associated with the protein pathway, is part of our endomembran system that moves proteins from their instructions in the nucleus through to out of the cell, whereas the smooth ER is more involved in both lipid formation and transport and also detoxification. So it just kind of has a totally different set of roles. They're both called endoplasmic reticulum because they're both are these kind of connected tubes of membrane. So that's why they're called the same thing, but in terms of function, they have quite unique functions. And then we have our Golgi here. That's going to then take the protein from there and exit through it. So while we have our endomembran system up, let's quickly kind of review how these structures that I've just drawn work together. That is kind of a key component in terms of test questions on organelles. Probably the number one kind of thing tested on is that idea, can you connect them to that idea of a protein pathway? So it's going to start in the nucleus, and your DNA is your instructions. DNA itself cannot leave the nucleus, so what leaves the nucleus is our messenger RNA. So my mRNA is going to leave the nucleus and find its way to a ribosome. So it's going to go from the nucleus to a ribosome, and those instructions are now going to be in that mRNA format. At the ribosome, we're going to actually make the protein. So they are going to build my protein at the ribosome. That protein then gets transported through the rough ER. So it's a series of kind of membranes that create a tube that can transfer it all throughout the cell. Then it ends up in the Golgi apparatus. So the rough ER can only transport within the cell. So in some cases, we make proteins that stay in the cell. And in fact, there's also free ribosomes in cells that actually make proteins that don't need to be transported. So they might be making proteins that are kind of needed just right there in that area. So we have some free ribosomes floating throughout. The ribosomes attached to the ER do tend to be more involved in that pathway of export. So if they're on an ER, they tend to be deliberately close to a Golgi so that they can be exported. So then it arrives at the Golgi, and the Golgi apparatus is going to actually form it into a vesicle. So that's what the little bubble is called. So step three, so I forgot to number them, was my rough ER. Step four was my Golgi. So it's packaging them, modifying them, make any kind of changes to them, tagging them. When we get to protein synthesis, we'll talk a little bit more about that kind of stage of processing proteins. And then it's going to be in the vesicle, and then of course, that vesicle is going to go out through the cell membrane itself, and that process is called exocytosis. So making sure you can account for that kind of entire pathway there that moves from the nucleus having the DNA instructions all the way through exocytosis through the cell membrane, and that's kind of my pathway to actually having proteins. All of these organelles, the Golgi apparatus and the endoplasmic reticulums, those are all found only in eukaryotes, and that's because they are membrane bound, which is really just a way of saying complex, but they actually have kind of a outer membrane folding. Ribosomes are actually found in all living cells. So all living cells have ribosomes, but not all living cells have Golgi and rough ER. So those are the kind of more sophisticated organelles that we're going to see only in our eukaryotic cells. Okay, two other really important organelles, and they're not as heavily tested on in this unit, only because we're going to talk about them quite a lot in the next unit. So I went ahead and kind of, a lot of the questions that were detailed about the structure of the chloroplast and mitochondria, kind of waiting and putting that more on our test on energy, because I want to wait till we've talked a little bit more about it. So there's my chloroplast and my mitochondria. The couple of things I do want you to know kind of relate to the endosymbiotic theory. So your chloroplast and your mitochondria, of course, are your energy organelles. And so some of the things that are unique about them is that they actually have their own DNA. They have their own ribosomes. They actually have those double membranes. They have a lot of internal membranes, and this is the thing that we're going to pick up more in next unit. So the internal membranes are really important in terms of the electron transport processes in both photosynthesis and respiration. So if you remember from ninth grade, that internal membrane is kind of curved, and that's where the actual electron transport chain takes place. So this very curved internal membrane has a high surface area, which means there's a lot of ATP that can be made along that internal membrane. So those internal membranes are significant. That's actually where the processes take place. Same with the chloroplast, those are your thylacoids, and those thylacoid membranes are where your light dependent reactions take place. So the reason why we have so many internal membranes is to optimize their ability to photosynthesize and produce cellular respiration. So the structure of those is significant, and like I said, the thing that we're going to really hit next unit in our energy unit is really understanding the structure of those two organelles. So they have these double membranes, which again, we're going to just say now, are very important for their actual functions. And then the other thing about it is that they can self replicate. And the reason for all of those things, the reason for that is because they used to be, or believed to be, used to be prokaryotic cells. So they were previously their own prokaryotic cells, and if you'll notice, those are basically the same characteristics that are true of all prokaryotes. So all prokaryotes have their own DNA, own ribosomes, they have a cell membranes, they have that kind of membrane kind of bound overall structure, and they can replicate themselves. So again, this is, makes that kind of a true statement. You can see that connection where it looks like they very well could have been prokaryotic cells. That theory is called the endosymbiotic theory. So endosymbiosis is living within, so endosymbiotic theory. So that's probably about the extent of really what you'll see about the mitochondria and chloroplast on this test because of the just scope that we left a lot of it. There's a couple organelles not pictured, so I'm just going to make a note of not pictured here. And there's really only one I really want to focus on. And the reason why a few of them I didn't put here is because they're not actually found in plants. So the biggest one to mention is lysosomes. So lysosomes are only in animals, and they're basically like a little, I hope if I could spell animals. It's a little fluid pocket essentially. So it's a little membrane, so it is a membrane, and inside of it has enzymes. And there's several different things it can be used for. So if macromolecules were to end up in a cell, so you digest your food, but there's a few sugars that are still attached, those enzymes could actually break down that food. That's one reason why you don't see them in plants is because plants don't consume food, so they don't have that same issue whereby macromolecules end up in their food inside their cells because they produce glucose directly. So this is kind of the idea of it's almost like digestive enzymes. So it helps with any kind of necessary last bit of digestion inside your cells. So you're supposed to do all your digestion outside your cells, but if that fails, then you do have enzymes there. But they also play an important role. So they can do digestion, but they can also kill invading cells. So if you actually have like bacterias or viruses that are inside your cell, either because they invaded your cell, or in the instance of bacteria, sometimes white blood cells will just engulf the bacteria. So the bacteria is out here, but they get engulfed in, and then the lysosomes can actually kill them. So lysosomes, they're kind of intended as an extra tool for digestion in animals, but they actually also have a really important role in kind of fighting infection because they can actually put enzymes and break down those things. They can also destroy kind of faulty organelles. So if you have a mitochondria that's not producing any energy, you can actually use the lysosomes to destroy it, which would actually be good because you don't want that lysosome, or that mitochondria to start self replicating, and then you have multiple bad mitochondria. So they can also use that to kind of manage their own things. The other things that are not pinched, that are also more prominent, animal centrials, which are going to be involved in mitosis, and also the cytoskeleton, which is the connecting kind of tubes and fibers that hold the shape. One last thing we will label on here is the cytoplasm. And so the cytoplasm kind of holds everything together. It's also the site of glycolysis, if you remember from our energy unit. So it is really important because it is actually in charge of making ATP. So before the mitochondria actually starts doing aerobic respiration, we do actually make ATP in the cytoplasm itself, so it has that important role. And then in prokaryotes, it's extra important because that's actually where all of your protein synthesis is going to, or your actual transcription and translation, transcription. So DNA replication and transcription also happen in the cytoplasm. So because prokaryotes don't have a nucleus, their cytoplasm is extra important, so they're going to do some other jobs there. Similarly, the cell membrane is really important because in prokaryotes, they're actually going to use it for photosynthesis and respiration. So because they don't have the membrane bound organelles, they're actually even more reliant on their cell membrane. So in eukaryotes, the cell membrane is primarily for transport, moving things in and out and cell communication, but it does take on some extra roles in prokaryotes due to them not having other organelles. So this, it's a lot of kind of stuff up there. Really, I just wanted to make sure that we reviewed a little bit about features that all cells have versus only eukaryotes. So again, my eukaryotes are the ones that have the nucleus and that have the actual membrane bound organelles, such as the Golgi apparatus and endoplasmic reticulum, and the mitochondria and the chloroplast. So kind of touching on that difference there between pro and euk, and then also kind of looking at that endomembran system. Couple just vocab turns to put up here before I erase it. This pathway to a protein member is called our endomembran system, which is just a fancy way of saying pathway to a protein. And the other word that we used that is important for eukaryotes, so eukaryotes have something Or they're better at that anyway. So compartmentalization is just the idea of assigning very specific jobs to specific organelles. So this idea of saying the Golgi, you are in charge of just packaging. The chloroplast, you are just in charge of making glucose. Mitochondria, you're just in charge of conversion to ATP. So it's dividing up tasks, and it makes the cell more efficient. So if each organelle has a very specific job that it does, that's going to increase its overall efficiency as a cell because each organelle is working very hard on one very specific task. Okay, so that's kind of my organelles review. Next thing I want to talk about is the surface area to volume ratio stuff. We're going to, this is going to be pretty short, but there's a couple of things I noticed kind of when looking at your calculations and so forth. So I do want to kind of talk about, a little bit about the concept and then a point about your calculations. So first of all, the main kind of principle we need to understand is that smaller cells are better at diffusion. So that doesn't mean they're necessarily better at everything. So kind of coming back to that idea of compartmentalization, really, really small cells like prokaryotes actually can hurt from not having enough organelles and be less kind of overall efficient. But if we're specifically talking about diffusion, so movement of things into and out of the cell, the smaller the cell, the better. And the simple logic is there's just not very far that things have to travel compared to a really big cell where things just have to travel further. So it's just a simple matter of less distance to travel. So if diffusion is just moving things, we're going to be able to move things more quickly if there's less space to have to move it through. So the key is in general, when it comes to diffusion, the smaller the cell, the better. The reason why smaller cells are better is because more of the cell is close to the membrane. So the key for why size matters is because more of the cell is in close proximity to So really, what's important is proximity to the membrane even more than size. So proximity to the membrane is key. So that even trumps overall size. And sometimes that's influenced by shape as well. So some shapes are going to have more membrane to their size than others. So what we want to do is rather than just talking about general size, so we can just say smaller cells are better. That's a general rule. What we really want to do is cells that have more proximity to the membrane. So the way of determining that is by the surface area to volume ratio. So instead of saying smaller cells, we can actually calculate the surface area to volume ratio, which is basically just a way of saying how much membrane is there. So it's a measure of kind of how much membrane to the cell is there. So it's a way of kind of measuring this, taking into account size, but also shape. So it kind of takes more into consideration. If you calculate the surface area to volume ratio, now, instead of smaller cells, we want them to have a larger surface area to volume ratio. So that's why one kind of source of air I wanted to make sure to talk about for the test is be really careful, because you want larger when it comes to the surface area to volume ratio, and larger surface area to volume ratio is generally found in smaller cells. So making sure you have those two things kind of clear in your head. So with the surface area to volume ratio, we are going to, you're going to have to be able to calculate those. So you're going to have to be able to calculate a surface area to volume ratio. So here's the key, you will have a formula sheet. So you do not need to memorize these formulas. That would be a very big waste of your time. So there's, because you need to know them for a cube, you need to know them for a cylinder, you need to know them for a sphere, and you'll spend way too much time calculating trying to memorize formulas. Use your formula sheet, they're all right there. So what you're going to do is you're going to calculate the surface area using the formula. And again, there's different formulas depending on the shape. So make sure you know, notice which shape it is and use the correct formula. Then you're going to calculate the volume with the formula. And then here's what I noticed on your work. A lot of you then left it as a ratio, which is fine, that makes sense. It's actually really hard to compare two things. If it's like 96 to 56, and this one is 71 to 42, looking at that, it's really difficult to determine which actually has the larger surface area to volume ratio. So you really need to divide it into a decimal, because some of you calculated these right, and some of you tried to simplify it. So some of you got it, and then you tried to simplify it kind of mathematically, but that still doesn't make it necessarily very easy. So what I want you to do is I want you to then divide your surface area by volume. Basically, when you do that, what you're meaning is that every ratio is actually going to be to 1. So this is going to be your surface area divided by your volume to 1. That's going to make it easier to compare because that's going to give you a numerical value. So that's going to say this one is .76 to 1, whereas this one is .82 to 1. Okay, well, .82 is larger. So divide it and get it in a decimal rather than trying to use it as fractions or simplified ratios. So decimals are going to be much easier to interpret. And you can do it as a decimal, and since this is where it may be, that may be contradicting kind of your math understanding, but for the application we're doing it for, which is basically just to determine which is larger, if you convert them to decimals to 1, it's just a lot easier to work with, and that's still mathematically sound as long as you put it to 1. If you're writing it like an NFRQ style, you're still writing it as a ratio. So you've, instead of writing 3 to 2, you're writing 1.5 to 1, and that's okay, because that's going to make it easier to compare because you're going to have different volumes, and otherwise you're going to find it difficult. So that's why the main thing I saw that I wanted to kind of pick up on is that go ahead and divide it and get your surface area to volume ratio in a single decimal number so that you can best compare it. Because some of you were doing the kind of calculations here correct, and then you were simplifying it or leaving it as these giant ratios, and then not necessarily being able to easily determine which is larger. So making sure you can do that last step of determining which is larger. So again, the larger the surface area to volume ratio, that means there's more membrane to size. So for that size cell, there's more membrane there, and of course, that's our goal. So the goal is we want to get more proximity to the membrane because diffusion happens through the membrane. So if diffusion happens through the membrane, the more membrane there is, the more effectively we're going to be able to move things in. So I think that's all you need for surface area. Again, I'm not going to write out all the formulas because you will have a formula sheet. So the main thing is just to know what are you looking for? And I actually think as long as you understand this and know how to do this, the questions on surface area to volume ratio should be really easy. So they're pretty straightforward. So that's everything, surface area to volume ratio. But do make sure that you kind of go over those questions as they come up on the progress check. And if you're still confused on this, watch the review video on it. So you have 12 daily videos that I think are assigned to you. I tried to pick six, but put all of them there. And so pick the one on cell size if you're still struggling with that. If you're like, no, that's easy, you may want to wait and not watch that and save it to watch one on tonicity or something you find a little bit more challenging. Okay, so next up, I want to do a fairly big diagram now. So I want to draw a cell membrane. So last time in class, you kind of drew your own, but in terms of how we did it, we didn't draw one big one together. So I do want to actually draw one big cell membrane with you together. And also, I want to go ahead and put some of the forms of transport through our membrane, so kind of trying to cover both transport related stuff and cell membrane kind of in one diagram. So again, if you're liking to learn by drawing with me, you can draw this membrane along with me if you're just spectating this and just give me a second. So I'm drawing some phospholipids to start with, and I don't remember to do this on all of them, but I do need to make sure that some of them are having these unsaturated fatty acids, just so that I'm kind of creating some expansion in that. So then I'm going to go ahead and draw the channel protein here. And again, these are kind of illustrations. Channel, they're actually proteins that have really, really complicated tertiary and quaternary structures with beta plated sheets and so forth. So do bear in mind that we are somewhat simplifying our things just to illustrate them in terms of their purpose. I'm going to deliberately give that guy no head because I'm going to use him in a minute to be a... use him in a minute to be a glycolipid. All right, let's put a protein pump in here. Also, really not particularly talented at drawing them. My phospholipids always end up like wildly different sizes. So I apologize for my membrane drawing not being one of my strengths in life. Okay, then I'm gonna put aquaporin, which doesn't have to be a spirally staircase. They generally do have kinda alpha helix plated structures. That's why they're often drawn that way, but don't get attached to that. Don't be like, if it doesn't look like that, it's not aquaporin. So they could draw it just like a channel protein and call it an aquaporin. I just tend to draw them that way to give them some distinction. All right, I feel like this is about enough phospholipids. Okay, there's our beautiful thing. Few more things I need to add to it. So I drew my integral proteins as I went. But then, let's give us some peripheral proteins as well. So this can be a peripheral protein up here. Put a peripheral protein down here. And then I put another one up here. All right, so now I have some peripheral proteins. And then I wanna do a glycoprotein and a glycolipid. So that's why I deliberately didn't give this guy head, so that he could be a glycolipid. That should be hexagons, they're just not hexagons, because I am not an artist. So feel free to draw those as hexagons on yours. And then I'm gonna draw some hexagons coming off here. Okay. Last thing I need to add on here before I start labeling some things is I don't have any cholesterol. So cholesterol should be like four little hexagons. And they don't have to be, they're not between every one, they're kinda sporadic. They just need to be at a few places to kinda hold some of it together. I'm just kinda picking a few random spots to throw in some cholesterol. So there's my cholesterol. So that's really kind of what you need to know in terms of the cell membrane. So let's label some things on the membrane itself. And then like I said, let's draw our kind of, some of our main types of transport through our cell membrane. So first of all, let's talk about the phospholipids themselves. So here we have our phosphate head. So the head is going to be a phosphate group, which is positive, attached to a glycerol, which is negative. So that's gonna make my head polar. So the head is polar because of the positive phosphate attached to a negative glycerol. That's what makes it polar. So you know that polar, reminder that water, I'm sure you know this after we hit a pretty heavy last unit, is polar as well. So because water is polar and the head is polar, that makes them hydrophilic. So attracts the water. That's really important, because we need to have this whole area on the outside of the cell. So this is my outside the cell. Your cells are always surrounded by aqueous solutions. So it's really important that those heads are all hydrophilic, so that the water can kind of be in proximity with the membrane. And then of course, this is my inside the cell. And inside our cells is our cytoplasm. And your cytoplasm is also an aqueous solution. So it's really important that the inside of our cell is also water-based. And so by having the heads on both sides, we can have water both inside and outside the cell. And that's how we can move water through in and out of the cells as well, is because of that polarity of the heads. The tails, on the other hand, are non-polar, because they are made of a fatty acids. So these are gonna be my fatty acid tails. And they are those long carbon hydrogen chains. So they really are those long C-H-C-H-C-H-C-H chains. And so long carbon hydrogen chains are non-polar, they don't carry any sort of charge. And so they are gonna be non-polar, and therefore they are gonna be hydrophobic. And that causes them to be attracted to each other. So they turn in and face each other, but they do not actually, and they would repel water. That's important in terms of why we have aquaporins, to make up for the fact that there is a very significant hydrophobic portion of our cell membrane, that water has a difficult time traveling through. The fatty acids can be saturated, so the straight lines represent saturated, but they can also be unsaturated. So I've deliberately drawn some of them with that kink. Remember, that's caused by the double bond. So the double bond between carbons is what's causing that. And that's important, because what it's doing, we see it on both sides, is it's providing a space between the phospholipid heads, or between the tails and heads, so they can't come too close together. I'm just gonna label that as unsaturated fatty acids. And in particular, when that's really important, is in cold. So in cold temperatures, molecules come together, so they tend to bind closer. And so the unsaturated fatty acids prevent too close of binding during, in cold temperatures. So they're gonna keep them apart even in cold temps. So in cold temperatures, our membrane could become too rigid. Otherwise, the phospholipids join together, bind together, and then that makes the membrane really like stretch, not stretchy, and really kinda condensed, and then things can't, it can't move and be flexible unless things can move through it. In hot temperatures, the opposite is the problem. So that's what we have our cholesterol for. So here is our cholesterol. So in hot temperatures, molecules expand out. So they tend to move away from each other in warm temperatures, and that could cause my membrane to actually fall apart. So if they kept moving further and further apart, you could actually lose your membrane altogether. Kinda like when we played with the bubble solution. If you kept expanding it, expanding it, expanding it, it could burst. So same kind of idea for your membrane. So the cholesterol is to keep them connected. So they can't get too far apart from each other if they're connected by that. So this is going to keep them together, or keep them close in hot temperatures. So whether it's cold or hot, we maintain a relatively consistent amount of spaced-outness. So instead of it being going like this all the time, which would put a lot of stress on your cells and kind of undo a lot of the homeostatic balance that we need, instead, these things mean they stay about the same amount of closeness or fartherness at all times. And that's important, these two things together maintain what we call fluidity. And fluidity is important. Fluidity allows the cell to move. It allows the cell to move things in and out. So fluidity is a really important concept in terms of cellular functioning. We want our membrane to remain that kind of ability to move with the cell, and ability to allow things in and out. Okay, so there's my fatty acids and my heads that make up the bilayer. So that's of course called the bilayer. And generally, the bilayer, when we use that term, we're kinda specifically referring to the phospholipids themselves. So the bilayer is kind of the phospholipids, and then embedded through that bilayer is gonna be our proteins. So next thing I wanna do is label some of the proteins. So up here, these ones here are my peripheral proteins. And my peripheral proteins notice it just on the surface, so they can just be polar. So a lot of times, these are just polar proteins. So they have primarily polar-based R groups. And so they can be a little bit simpler and smaller proteins, and they just have to embed their kind of polar aspects of the protein into the heads. And so what they do is they're involved in kind of the communication parts. And sometimes they have glycoproteins attached, so they have the carbohydrates attached. Sometimes they don't. But they're gonna tend to be involved in things like identification. They can actually be enzymes. They can be involved in hormone recognition. So we had kind of a whole list of things they can do. They can be, play a role in kind of electron transport. So they can kind of play a role in kind of electron transport chains. So there's quite a number of things they do. Generally have a kind of a more variety of purposes, whereas our integral proteins tend to be more associated specifically with kind of transport. This one here on the inside is also a peripheral protein, and its job is to anchor. So it actually attaches to the cytoskeleton. So the cytoskeleton kind of attaches itself to this. And it holds the cytoskeleton out, so that the cytoskeleton doesn't kinda collapse on itself. Keeps it out and expanded to give our cells a really good shape. So there's my peripheral protein. All three of these are integral proteins. Integral proteins are by definition amphotagic, which just means polar and non-polar. So essentially, they have to be polar up here to embed themselves in the heads, and non-polar in the middle area in order for them to maintain their place within that kind of fat layer as well. So they have to have both polar and non-polar regions. They tend to be fairly complex proteins as a result, in order for that to happen. So of the integral proteins, there's three that we've kinda talked about in particular. So here we have our channel proteins. And channel proteins play a really important role in facilitated diffusion. So we'll talk about that in just a second when we kind of hit our transports. But I'll go ahead and write facilitated diffusion. This I've drawn to be a protein pump. So you can also have carrier proteins. I didn't really draw a carrier protein. They tend to be involved in facilitate diffusion as well, and they can look quite similar to the pumps. So they're not necessarily an opening, because they actually latch onto something and then change shape to pull it through. So they probably look more like a protein pump, but they're more involved in facilitate diffusion than active transport. So my protein pump is gonna be involved in active transport. And then this here, again, drawn this way just to make it kind of distinguish out, also because it is, usually does have an alpha helix-based shape, and this is gonna be involved in osmosis. Okay, last thing I wanna label on this, and then I wanna do, kinda hit on our actual transport types, is the glycoproteins and glycolipids. So this one is a glycolipid. This one is a glycoprotein. Functionally, they do the same thing, which is that they're involved in cell-to-cell communication. So we talked about the fact that antigens are an example. So antigens are markers on your red blood cells. They kind of say who they are, declare their blood type. They can also be involved in hormone reception. So sometimes they can be receptors that actually receive messages and so forth. So generally, in some way or another, they're involved in communication. So our next unit is energy, but our unit after that, our fourth unit, is cell communication. So we'll talk more about that then, in terms of a little bit of ligands and signaling and so forth. So right now, I just want you to know the glycoproteins and glycolipids are involved in that cell-to-cell communication. You don't really need to know the details of how they do that yet. Okay, so then let's look at the transport stuff, and go ahead and put that on this same diagram. I actually think most of the transport stuff should be pretty easy for you, and that it's the most kind of consistent with what you did at ninth grade level. So you should be able to know facilitated diffusion goes through a channel protein from high to low. So I'm not gonna spend a super long time on active versus passive and so forth, because I'd rather spend more time reviewing the harder stuff, which is kind of the calculations and so forth that is new. But let's do talk about it at least briefly. So first of all, not everything has to go through a channel protein. So if you have small particles, they actually have the ability to go directly through the membrane itself. So small, non-polar molecules can move through the membrane. So let's say we have, the best example is oxygen. So if we have a bunch of oxygen out there, and only a little bit of oxygen in here, oxygen can diffuse straight through the bilayer. And then carbon dioxide is the same. So then carbon dioxide will build up here inside the cell, and it can go straight through the bilayer out. So those are the ability for them to diffuse directly through, and we're gonna call that simple diffusion. And the key with simple diffusion is it goes through the bilayer itself. So it requires nothing to help it. And it has to be passive. So for it to be diffusion, it has to be passive, which means you have to be going from high concentration to low concentration. So the only reason oxygen's moving in there is because there's higher concentration out here than in here. So that's what's enabling it to move in. They have to, in order for them to fit through, though, they have to be small, because they're gonna have to be able to fit through the heads. And in order for them to easily make their way through the tails, they preferably need to be non-polar. So polar objects can diffuse through, but they take a really long time. So they kinda get lost, it's kinda like going through an obstacle course. So if your polar molecule, the tails keep repelling you, and they just have to keep going and keep going and going, they will eventually get through, but it's preferable to use a channel protein, because that's gonna make it happen a lot faster. So water would be able to eventually get into our cells without aquaporins, but it would happen more slowly. So most of the time, diffusion can occur even with polar, but it's gonna be a lot faster if they're non-polar. So it goes through the bilayer, has to be passive transport, high to low, therefore no energy is required, and it's these small, non-polar things. And our best examples are carbon dioxide and water, which is really important, because those are some of the most commonly needed things inside our cells. We have to move oxygen all the time in to do cellular respiration, and that oxygen can come straight in through the membrane. So like I said, we have this dilemma with polar objects, that they often cannot come easily through the membrane, because their polarity causes the tails to repel them. So to accommodate that, so that we can still move things through, we're gonna use facilitated diffusion. So facilitated diffusion is for our things that are just that little bit either bigger or polar. So now we're looking at things like ions that we want to move in, but their charge makes them difficult. So we still need to move from high to low. So if we're moving them from low to high, it's no longer facilitated diffusion. It would actually then be active transport. Sometimes you'll see it called facilitated diffusion, sometimes you'll see it called facilitated transport. Just writing both to cover myself. So this time, we're gonna go through an actual channel protein. So we're going through the channel protein instead. It's still passive. So still passive transport. So we're still going from high to low. And this time, we're looking at either slightly larger molecules can use these. So it could be that it's still non-polar, but it just couldn't fit through. Or they're really commonly used for polar objects. So that's kind of the objects, ions, that's the most common thing. So a lot of times, these are for charged ions, so things like sodium, potassium, chloride, calcium. So that's probably in your body, some of the most commonly used things that they're used for is for those kind of ions that are gonna play a really big role in like how our nervous and muscles, our nervous system and musculosystem work. So that'll kind of come up other times, as we look at kind of ion movement and how facilitated diffusion plays a role in that. Last form of passive transport is to know about is of course osmosis. So this time, we're moving water, and it can be either direction. The key is just that it's high to low. So here's my water, if there's more water inside my cell, I'm gonna draw, go in the opposite direction, here's all my water. And there's less water out here, the water's gonna go up through the aquaporin. So making sure we recognize aquaporins aren't a way for water to only enter the cell. They're a two-direction movement. So we can move water whichever direction. Of course, depends on water potential, which we'll talk about next. So this is our last process, which is osmosis. Osmosis goes through the aquaporins. And again, if you didn't have aquaporins, yes, you could still move water. It would just be more slow. So ideally, through an aquaporin, water can diffuse through osmosis just through the membrane. But if you have functional aquaporins, they're gonna use them, because it's gonna happen a whole lot faster with an aquaporin than without. Has to be passive transport. So water always moves from high to low. And that's what we're gonna talk about next. But basically, that's just the simple statement of water potential. So water potential can sound really complicated. All it is, is it's saying you have to move from high water potential, where there's a lot of water, to low water potential, where there's not a lot of water. And then we're talking specifically about water. So the only thing that moves by osmosis is water itself. And so that's kind of our key there. Okay, so that's kind of a passive transport. Forgot about the last one. So passive transport, sorry, those are all passive transport. Active transport is what I have left. So active transport is when I mean to move things against how they want to go. So in this case, I need to take this hydrogen that's nice and spread out and I need to move it here with my other hydrogens. And I need to do that or I'm not going to be able to activate ATP synthase and my cell is going to die. So like crucial, like it doesn't matter if he wants to stay there and be spread out, he needs to come in. So protein pumps can actually take it from one area and physically push it through the membrane. So it's pushing it through the membrane with a kind of a singular integral pump to move it to where it needs to go. So this is the action of pumps, which is a form of active transport. The key here is not necessarily what type of particle it is, but it's just the fact that it's going from low to high. So from low concentration to high concentration is what distinguishes it as active transport. So that's really the key. It can be an ion, it can be a larger molecule, it can be kind of various to what it is. But it has to go from low to high and therefore requires ATP. One other type of active transport that we did kind of briefly mention is endo and exocytosis. They're just not very easy to draw. But in endo and exocytosis, the object is actually too large to go through a pump. So it actually is going to push down my whole membrane and take some of the membrane with it. So it's actually going to envelop the membrane to go in or out. So endo and exocytosis are also active transport. It's also movement through the membrane. Like I said, it just doesn't use a protein, it has to push the entire thing out. So it just has a different kind of pattern of movement. Okay, so that's kind of everything membrane and transport-ish all in one diagram. Last things we need to talk about are the osmosis specific things. So we're down to osmosis. And we kind of talked about this last time, but there's basically three water moves statements I want you to know. And really just knowing these statements is the most important thing. So water moves from. And then I'm going to list it as kind of three statements that water moves from. So first of all, water moves from a hypotonic environment to a hypertonic environment. So from hypo to hyper. That's one of the ones that's kind of most familiar in terms of what we've talked about it at a ninth grade level. But it is a little bit different in terms of how we phrased it. Because last time we kind of in ninth grade just said the environment is hypertonic. So moved from hypotonic to hypertonic. Water moves from low osmolarity, which is just a way of saying low number of solutes. To high osmolarity. Which just means high number of solutes. Really means the same thing as our hypo and hyper. Hypo just means less solutes than the other one, whereas hyper means more solutes. So hyper and hypo is like saying older or younger than somebody. Osmolarity is like saying old or young. So they're just more absolute, more relative. And then the last one is that water moves from high water potential, which is lots of free water, to low water potential, which is less free water, usually because of more solutes. So the more solutes you have, the less free your water is. So those are your three statements. I was going to kind of draw two pictures. Not going to bother drawing an isotonic, you know, if it's the same, it's not going anywhere. But if we were to draw kind of a cell in two different environments and look at how you would label the different things. So let's put this cell in salty water. And let's put this cell in very dilute water, we'll put it in pure water. And here's my cell. So then we need to label it in terms of these things. So first, if you look at the idea of hyper and hypotonic. So salty water is very hypertonic. So my salty water is hypertonic. Therefore, my cell is hypotonic. So we know if water moves from hypo to hyper, it's going to go out of the cell. The other way you could phrase it, so just kind of going through these different phrasings, is you could say that my salty water has a high number of solutes because it's so salty. So this is going to have a high osmolarity. My cell meanwhile, because it has less solutes than the salty water, has the lower osmolarity. I think I said this when we talked about in class, but I find osmolarity a particularly pointless one since I think tonicity kind of proves the same thing, but is a better, kind of more comparative one. But anyway, just want to make sure we cover it. And then let's look at in terms of water potential. Well, because of how many solutes are my salt water, it's going to have a low water potential. My cell is going to have a higher water potential because it doesn't have as many solutes. So that it's going to go from the cell to the beaker. So it predicts the same way in each case. And in some ways, that whole diagram may be overly complicated to you because you already know from a ninth grade understanding, hey, if you put it in salt water, the water's going to go out. This is just three ways of saying that same thing. If we look at it in pure water, so same idea, if we look at it first in terms of, we'll do it backwards this time. We'll look at it in terms of water potential first. So pure water, we know has the highest water potential. So the high water potential is actually zero, because remember, water potential is usually negative. Therefore, my cell itself is going to have the lower water potential because it does have some solutes. I should have written that blue both times for getting my own color schemes. So high to low, water's going to go in from the higher water potential, the pure water, to the lower one. If we look in terms of osmolarity, pure water is going to have a very low osmolarity because it has no solutes. Comparatively, my cell is going to have the higher osmolarity because it does have some solutes. So we're going to go from low osmolarity to high osmolarity. Last one in terms of tonicity, pure water is very hypotonic. The cell therefore is comparatively hypertonic and we go from hypo to hyper. Again, the question's not going to ask you to do all three. It's just they like to vary it up. So the question might ask it to you in terms of tonicity or it might ask it to you in terms of osmolarity or it might ask it to you in terms of water potential. The outcome is the same. It doesn't matter. It's just different ways of saying the exact same thing. Okay, so then let's look at water potential calculations. Actually, I'm going to leave that to very last. The next thing I'll look at is just predicting the molarity, what we were doing in class today. So I'm just going to brief, do this fairly briefly. But the other calculation thing that you can have to do is how do you determine the molarity based on lab data? So this isn't necessarily a calculation. So first thing I need to clarify is there's no formula. So if you get to a question like this on the test, don't start rapidly finding, looking to see if there's a formula anywhere. It's based on graphing. So what you need is you need data. So in order to do this, what has to be given to you is the percent change in mass of the cells. So whether it's potato, egg, whatever it is, at different concentrations. So that has to be given to you. If the question doesn't give you that, you cannot dissolve this. So it has to be given to you. You have to have that data. One thing I will caution you is it has to be the percent change. So it could give you the information and not give it to you as percent change. It could just say the absolute change, in which case you need to work out the percent change. Or it could give you a whole bunch of data, including the absolute change and the percent change. The percent change is what you need to use to actually do the calc, the graphing and so forth. So find the percent change and you have to have it at different malarities, not just one. So that's what has to be given. So this has to be given to you in the problem. Then what you need to do is you have to create a graph. So again, there's no formula. You have to graph the data. And you're always going to put the molarity on the x-axis. And you're going to put the percent change on the y-axis. And then you're going to construct a line of best fit. So that's your next step. So graph the data. One thing I will tell you, and they put this on here a couple of times, it likes to be really evil, is you have to use consistent scales. So you need to pick a scale and go with it. Don't use only the numbers the data gives you. So for instance, the data might be missing a point. Once you, if you go up by point two in your molarity, you have to continue to go up by point two. If you go up in your percent change by point five or by five, you have to stick with that. It's super important because if you're going to use a line of best fit to try and predict something, your scales must, must, must be consistent. So whatever you go up by, you have to stay consistent on the scales for that to work. So then once you've done that from the line of best fit, you need to find where it is a zero percent change. So you need to find the zero on your line of best fit and kind of go down and check what the molarity is. So find where there's a zero percent change and then what is the molarity on the x-axis at zero percent? And that's for the line of best fit. So that's how you do that. So again, that's why you have to have the consistent scales. And the reason why that works is because the point where there's a zero percent change should represent an isotonic environment whereby in which the cells are equal to the actual solution. So whatever the solution's molarity is at zero, that's telling you that's what the cell's molarity is. So if there's a zero percent change at point four six, that's because that's also the molarity of the cells. So make sure you can also explain that, that you understand that a zero percent change, that represents an isotonic situation whereby the molarity of the cells is equal to the molarity of the solution. Therefore, if we know what the molarity of the solution is at zero percent, we know that that's the molarity of the cells. So that's how you do that. So again, no formula, it's all graphing based. So when you get to those questions, you have to be given the data and then you form a graph. And from the graph, you can use the graph to work that out. That it should help that there will be graph paper on the question. So that should be a good clue to you, like, hey, I see some graph paper. This must be what is wanting me to do. So that should be kind of your cluing you into that. Okay, last thing I want to talk about is water potential. So first of all, remember water potential, a key is to not make it more complicated than it is. So water potential is just the potential for water to move or leave its environment. That's all it is. So if you have high water potential, your water is highly likely to move. So it's going to leave areas with high water potential. So free water is most likely to move because it is hypotonic. So therefore, it is most likely to move. More solutes equals less likely to move. So the more solutes you have, the less likely your water is to move. So it's, if water has nothing bound to it, it's free, it can move to New York any day. If the water has a whole bunch of solutes, it's got a lot of baggage, a lot of commitments, it's not able to up and move as well. So free water is always going to have your higher water potential. And then we use this little symbol for water potential. And water that has lots of solutes is going to have a low water potential. So that's all it's saying. And again, our rule that we already wrote, but I'm going to write it again. Water always moves from high water potential to low water potential. So that's important. There are two formulas. You will have a formula sheet. So you don't have to memorize them. Having said that, if you've done enough problems of them, they kind of get familiar after a while. I mean, you just have to know how to use them. So water potential equals solute potential plus pressure potential. Solute potential is always going to be a negative number. Pressure potential is going to be a positive number and only found in plant cells. So animal cells do not have a pressure potential. Open beaker solutions do not have a pressure potential. So a lot of the times, your pressure potential will actually be zero and your water potential will just be your solute potential. So in a lot of cases, there is no pressure potential anyway. But if you're taking at plant cells, then there is a pressure potential. Then you have to know how to calculate solute potential. So then solute potential has its own formula. So the formula for solute potential equals negative CRT. So don't drop the negative. I is the ionization content, a constant. If it's sucrose, it's one or glucose. If it's sodium chloride, it's two. If it's anything other than those two things, the problem has to tell you. So those are the only two you could be expected to know. C is the concentration in moles. That's going to be told to you again in the problem. R is a pressure, is a constant. It's going to be point zero eight three one. That number's on your formula sheet. So you don't need to memorize point zero eight three one. It should be there. And T is your temperature in Kelvin, which is going to be your Celsius plus two seventy-three. So you're going to have to use that formula to work out your solute potential. And then potentially you might use that to work out your water potential. So one of the problems that I did on this sheet was really hard. So I thought I might just do it again in case some of you kind of like, it was one of the lessons where it kind of went back and forth. So I was going to do number 11 again on this water potential problem sheet. And that'll be the last thing I do. This is already gone for an hour and 10 minutes. This is already gone for an hour and 10 minutes. So if you were in class and you already saw number 11 and you were good with it, feel free to stop now. But otherwise, I'm just going to spend five minutes and quickly do that hard problem again. Just because I feel like if you can do that problem, you can do any problem. And then that'll be kind of the last thing that we do. Otherwise, just make sure you practice. So I'm going to write the problem up. So it tells me in the problem that at 20 degrees Celsius, a cell that has a pressure potential of three bars is in equilibrium with its surrounding and its surrounding solution of point five molar sucrose in an open beaker. So that's what's given to me. The question that's actually asked of me is what is the molar concentration of the cell? So this is actually kind of a different way of doing what we just did with the graphing. So in this case, I don't have data to graph and get that way. But it's kind of the same idea of I want to know the concentration of a cell itself, so based on kind of where it's at equilibrium. So let's look at the actual, what's given to us. So what's asked of me is actually going to take a couple of steps. So what I'm going to need to do first is I know it's in equilibrium with its environment. So what I want to do is I want to work out the water potential of the environment. Because if I can work out the water potential of the environment, I know that that's going to be the same for the cell. So the water potential of the environment or surroundings equals the water potential of the cell at equilibrium. So because I know it's at equilibrium, I know that whatever the water potential to the environment is, is the water potential to the cell. So step one then is I want to work out the water potential of the environment. Water potential equals solute potential plus pressure potential? Because the environment is an open beaker, there is no pressure potential. So in this case, the water potential of the environment is the solute potential. So what I'm really wanting to work out is the solute potential of the environment. So that's what I'm really working out there. Okay, so to do that, I'm going to use my negative CRT formula. So negative I, it tells me it's sucrose. So that's going to be one. Concentration, it tells me that it's point four molar. R is always point zero eight three one. And my temperature is 20 degrees plus two seventy-three. So two ninety-three. So then I plug those numbers in. So I go point four times point eight three one times two ninety-three. Okay, so I get nine point seven three. Okay, so I have now, that is now my water potential of the environment. So then step two, I should know that that is my water potential of the cell. However, I'm not asking, I'm not being asked about that. I'm asking about the molar concentration of the cell. So in order to work out the molar concentration of the cell, I need to work out the solute potential of the cell. So I need to work out the water environment, the water potential of the cell and the solute potential of the cell. So we already know that this is going to be the same as the environment. So it's going to be nine point seven three. However, that is not in this case the same as the solute potential because if you look back at my problem, it told me that it had a pressure potential. So if I want to work out the solute potential of the cell, I need to take into account that it has a pressure potential. So in this case, it's going to be water potential equals solute potential plus pressure potential. So this is what I just determined. So I know that for the cell, nine point seven three is the water potential. Solute potential is what I don't know. And my pressure potential is going to be three bars. So my solute potential then, so this is going to be, sorry, I need to make sure I don't lose my negative. Word to the wise, don't lose your negative. So negative seven point three minus three is going to be my solute potential. So my solute potential is going to be negative twelve point seven three. Okay, so now I know the solute potential of my cell. And if that's what my question were asking, I would be done. But again, coming back up here, it's actually asking me for the molar concentration of sucrose. So it didn't actually ask me for the solute potential, although I need to use the solute potential to work that out. What it's actually asking me for is this number here. So it's asking me for C. So then step three, which is my last step, is I need to determine C given I now know the solute potential. And this is an overly hard problem. And again, the reason I picked this is just because it allowed me to show you all the different types of calculations, kind of all in one problem. Having you determine the molar concentration, I don't think that's on the test. So please don't panic if you feel like that last step is what's stressing you out. I'm just kind of showing you kind of the full extent of what you could do with these formulas. So solute concentration, the solute potential is negative CRT. Okay, so then we know this number, negative twelve point seven three. I is still sucrose. So in this case, so we're still talking about a cell with a, so we're going to still use one. And that's what the surrounding, kind of, that's what the, what we've actually been told because we're looking at the concentration of sucrose in the cell. So that's why we're leaving it at the one. C is what we don't know. R is going to be point zero eight three one. And my temperature is still going to be at two ninety-three. So now this just becomes a solve for X kind of equation. So whereby we're multiplying point oh eight three one times two ninety-three and getting negative twenty-four point three five C. So to solve for C, we're going to go twelve point seven three divided by twenty-four point three five. And we get point five two. And that is the concentration of sucrose in the cell itself. Again, I wouldn't really worry about step three. That's a really obscure one. But definitely these ideas. So definitely be able to calculate solute potential and then use that to calculate either the different solute potential or the pressure potential. Be able to use both of those formulas. Okay, so that has been an hour and 20 minutes. Sorry, long review video. Hopefully, you found it helpful and feel like some of that prepares you for the test. Good luck with your test, and I know you'll do great. Bye.